To the January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-one ZBA meeting for the town of Merrimack. If you'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have the... Daisy, I want to roll on top of you, honey. Okay, alright. Rich is gonna be out tonight, so Chuck will be sitting in for him. The next ZBA meeting will be February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, seven PM in the Matthew Thornton Room. Anybody who will be speaking tonight, if you could please stand and raise your right hand? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Alright, alright, and... Other than that, everyone else is here. We need the preamble, if you would, Rod.
Good evening to those in attendance and watching at home. For the benefit of those who have not previously attended a zoning board hearing, the procedure is as follows. The petitions will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda, however, the Chair may change their order at their discretion. The Board will treat all petitioners, their representatives, abudders, and other interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to give an overview of their petition and read through their responses to the criteria applicable to their case, allowing for the Board to ask questions after each item. State law and local ordinances establish a criteria that must be met in order for the Board to grant approval to a petition, and it is the petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they have met each criterion. Following the presentation, the Chair will open the floor for public comment, either in favor or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner and public. However, discussion will not be allowed to devolve into a back-and-forth arguments. All comments made shall be directed toward the Chair. Should a question be asked, the Chair will pose a question to the petitioner. Afterward, the Chair will close the public hearing, and the Board will deliberate and vote on the petition. At this time, please silence all mobile devices. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod. Two gentlemen came in. Are you... Are you gonna be speaking this evening? Can you please stand, raise your right hand? Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Alright, um, so a couple of housekeeping items. When you come up, there is a microphone. The seat is gonna actually be seating right there. They make sure the green light is on, although it is a little green there. Make sure it's bright green, so just make sure your mic is on. And that being said, we'll hear the first petition is Robert A. Curry and Karen J. Curry, petitioner-owners variance under section three point zero-two of the zoning ordinance to permit the conversion of an existing single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling in the R-one residential district, whereas two-family dwellings are not permitted, and to permit a two-family dwelling post-conversion to remain approximately thirty feet from the front property line, whereas fifty feet is required. This setback variance is only necessary if the variance to permit the two-family dwelling is granted. The parcel is located at Four Country Road, formerly Two Country Road, in the R-one residential by map and aquifer conservation districts, tax map three A lot sixty-five, case number ZBA two thousand and twenty-one dash thirty-nine. This item is continued from the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, into December twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one ZBA meetings. Casey, with this being almost two variances, if one is... The first one's approved. Do we need a variance number for the setback as well, or do we hear that separately? I would imagine we would vote on these separately.
Uh, it can be addressed all at once, but when you're ready to make a motion, it might be cleaner to do two separate motions.
Okay, but it would still be the same ZBA two thousand and twenty-one dash thirty-nine?
Yeah, same case number, correct.
Excellent. Alright, gentlemen, if you just tell us where you're from and... Yep, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can I ask a question, first of all? If I look at the assessing database, we're talking about two versus four, and when I look at the assessing database, I'm assuming that we've subdivided this plot so that the right-hand... I'm looking at the... Yeah, that would be... That would be now two, and the current one would be four, and going forward to the left would be six or however many.
Yep, this would be two, and this would be four.
Our assessing database has not been corrected.
Yeah, this was just subdivided in November.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
We are, as I'm the homeowner, we have not been notified by anyone in town as to a change of numbering at this point at all, so.
If you could both state your names and...
Brett Allard with Bernstein Sher, counsel for the landowner, Robert Curry.
And I'm Robert Curry.
You address as well?
For the...
I'm at Two County Road, Merrimack.
Okay.
Robert, make sure your mic is...
It is.
Okay, okay.
Alright.
Two County Road slash Four County Road.
Slash zero slash six.
Yeah, I'm sure since it's only been a few months, it probably just... It'll get caught up.
That was my question.
Yeah.
Why don't we... Why don't you tell us a little bit about what we're looking to accomplish here?
Sure, so this is tax parcel three A dash sixty-five, formerly Two County Road, created by a subdivision plan that was recorded back in November of this year. This is our one by map district in the aquifer conservation district. The subject lot that we're looking at here, which I've outlined in blue, is two point eight seven acres approximately. It's serviced by existing private well in septic. The existing use is single-family. You can see the structure here, an attached barn on the back, and a long gravel driveway that runs the entire length of the building right here and even beyond the building a little bit. So, we're here asking for two variances. One is from section three point oh-two to allow the conversion of the structure from a single-family home to a two-family home. It's a strictly interior conversion. They're not proposing any external changes to the structure or the property. And then the second variance is from section three point oh-two to allow for the existing front portion of the building right here to remain approximately thirty feet from the front setback. The reason for that variance is this is a pre-existing non-conforming structure relative to that front setback. This is a very old structure. Once we get the variance to convert the building from a single-family to a two-family, if that's approved tonight, it forfeits the grandfathered status of that front setback, so to speak. So, that second variance is to make things clean, to make sure that in terms of the structure, if that first variance is granted, that second... That encroachment can stay where it is, but we're not proposing any changes to the existing footprint.
So, is... I'm just curious. Actually, no, I'll let you go through the... I'll let you just go through the criteria first.
So, just to talk, walk through the two... What would be the two units real quick? So, unit one is the front portion of the building as it exists today. It's the old finished portion of the home. It was constructed in about seventeen forty-eight, like I said, very old. That's three bedrooms and one and a half bathrooms. Unit two is the middle area here. It's the... It's unfinished living space. It's actually really some beautiful post-and-beam architecture in there that was constructed by the prior owner, and it connects what would be unit one with the existing barn out back. That structure was constructed by a prior owner in about two thousand and two. We're not sure what they wanted to do with that space, but what we're proposing to do is to finish it up and convert it to a second unit that'll have one bedroom and one bathroom, which is, you know, essentially very similar to an ADU. We actually satisfy all of the ADU requirements except for square footage. This proposed second unit is about nineteen hundred square feet, where the max ADU square footage is only a thousand square feet, so. But again, it's an existing structure. It was there when my client bought the property. Our initial plan was to get it approved as an ADU, but the configuration of the existing structure just wouldn't allow it due to the square footage.
So, which actually brings my question. Is this being created as a rental p... Property or rental? Or is it being created... Or do you... Are you looking to... So, I'm just kinda curious, if it's an ADU, why we wouldn't go down the ADU road? Because it sounds like... Or is it gonna be a rental? I'm just out of curiosity as to why this particular...
I believe my client intends to live in the new unit that we're... He lives, obviously, in the finished front unit right now. He intends to move to the smaller, not an ADU, but an ADU, once it's finished. I don't... I'm not sure what the long-term plans are for the property. You can speak to that if...
Well, right now, we... My wife and I are planning to move into the smaller space. As Brett said, it's about nineteen hundred square feet, and it's an existing structure that's been there for twenty years, built by the previous owner and left unfinished for... We have no idea why. And it actually has rough plumbing for a kitchen and a bathroom, full bathroom, and heat is partially installed. And so, we're looking to finish that and move into there, and then we'd like to rent out the existing three-hundred-year-old portion of the house.
Okay. That's what I was trying to understand, is to whether or not you're trying to create an ADU, or you're trying to create a rental?
Yes.
So, you're looking for the latter, the rental?
It could be a family member that would rent the other portion of the house from us, but it also may not be, so.
Okay, and that's what I was... I wanted to understand the purpose from that perspective. Thank you.
It is a little funky here, because we have a sort of existing structure that's actually half-finished on the inside. So, the concepts are so similar that I think if we got, say, a variance from the nineteen hundred square foot ADU requirement or a variance for a two-family, at the end of the day, it's a second unit with one bedroom and one bathroom and a nineteen-foot square foot structure.
Right, but if it was... If it's apartment... If it's gonna be the apartment side, then the utilities are split as opposed to an ADU where they share utilities, which is why I was asking. You know, from that perspective, obviously, there's gonna be two sets of meters and all of that.
Sure.
When did you buy the property?
December of two thousand and sixteen.
And what was your intent when you bought the property?
Had no, you know, real intent. It just... We kinda drove by and saw the for-sale sign and liked the property. At one point, we had contemplating having a wedding venue there.
I remember that.
Because of the...
Yeah, I do, too.
The acreage of the land and the barn and that unfinished space, we felt could have been turned into a meeting area.
We're good.
Yeah, Rod.
If I could ask, Casey, is there a difference to who can rent an ADU versus an apartment?
Uh, nope, the town cannot regulate that. So, we can't say that it can only be a family member. That's not something that the town can be involved with.
And yes, Lynn?
Casey, if we have an ADU, doesn't the owner have to occupy one of the units?
Yeah, yep, but that's not what they're asking.
Yeah, this definitely sounds like more...
I'm just clarifying.
So...
One unit will definitely be owner-occupied.
Yeah.
But it doesn't have to be?
Okay, if you... Yeah, wanna proceed with the points?
So, granting the variances would not be contrary to the public interest. To be contrary to the public interest, the variance must unduly conflict with the ordinance such that it violates basic zoning objectives, which our request does not. The two tests are: would granting the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten public health and safety? Here, it won't do either of those. There's no change to the area. Again, this is strictly interior conversion. We're not proposing any external changes to the structure or the property. To the extent where this criteria applies to the front yard setback, that front portion of the structure is already within the setback. It's existing and grandfathered, and as my client said, been there for almost three hundred years, so it won't change the essential character of the neighborhood. So, from an external perspective, there's no change to the home or the property, so there's no change to the character of the area. There's no threat to the public. There's plenty of parking. Again, big, long gravel driveway here. No measurable increase in traffic, and so for those reasons, we believe that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest.
Any questions? Okay, number two.
The spirit of the ordinance is observed. It's in the public's interest. The courts have held it's in the public's interest to uphold the spirit of the ordinance, and therefore, the two criteria are related, and if you satisfy one test, you almost certainly satisfy the other. Again, no undue congestion or overcrowding. This is a big lot, even after subdivision, in a fairly rural area. If the variances are granted, there will only be four bedrooms total, which is actually consistent with the amount of bedrooms that many single-family homes themselves have, which would be a permitted use by right, as it is right now. Again, plenty of parking, and I know we've talked about ADUs, but this really is very similar to an ADU. These types of conversions, as this board knows, are becoming very common, and they're, you know, necessary and helpful to increase access to housing, particularly with the situation going on in New Hampshire right now with the housing crisis. Increasing the housing stock in town is a benefit to the public and consistent with the spirit of the ordinance.
So, I had a question. I don't know if it's necessary, the spirit of the ordinance. So, the... And you explained the situation where you're moving into the smaller portion, or you would be looking to move into the smaller portion. Both of the units seem to have... Would have separate utilities and be their own separate entities, so to speak. I guess my question is, if you decide to sell the home, that goes... Does... Are you... You're just... You're selling... You're just... Are you selling your apartment, or are you selling... Would you be... You'd be selling the entire home?
You would have to sell the entire home because it's not a condo.
Okay, so, okay, and that's something that I wanted to... Just trying to understand when I'm looking at this. Okay.
Almost like a duplex, unless that's a non-condo duplex.
Not a duplex.
Well, two-family.
No, it is. It's one... It's one unit.
But you have... Basically, you have a home with a rentable apartment.
Right.
It's two units.
But it's one entity.
Right. You couldn't convey one unit without the other unless it was a condo.
Yeah, yeah, there's no condo conversion happening here. That would be a planning board action.
That was my point, yeah.
Okay. Alright, number three.
Substantial justice is done by granting the variances. As this board knows, this is the balancing test. The Supreme Court has held that perhaps the only guiding rule is that any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by gain to the general public is an injustice. We don't think there's any public injury if the variances are granted. We don't think there's any public gain if the variances are denied. There would only be loss to the applicant. We believe the proposed conversion is appropriate for the area, and granting variances that are appropriate for the area does substantial justice for the applicant. Therefore, when balancing rights, the loss to the applicant if the variances are denied outweigh any harm to the public if the variances are granted, and we believe granting them does substantial justice.
Any questions? Number four.
The values of surrounding properties will not be diminished. Again, the lot's gonna remain consistent with the residential character of the other lots in the neighborhood, such that there's no impact on surrounding property values. The variances, if they were granted, would only result in the increase of one bedroom and one bathroom, which really, as my client said, he would be living in the smaller unit. It's just him and his wife right now, so no measurable increase on noise or traffic. This is, again, large lots with very secluded homes in this area. No exterior structural changes, not to repeat myself. So, we're not proposing to build any new structures in any setbacks or anything that could potentially compromise the values of surrounding properties. That front yard grandfathered encroachment is already there, hasn't been an issue, so we think the values of surrounding properties will not be diminished.
Question on that part right there. Current septic is sufficient, because I'm assuming that's not town right up there, right? So, current septic and well would suffice, that would have to be replaced or redug or anything like that?
To the best of our knowledge, it's sufficient. We had the septic system inspected quite thoroughly before purchasing the property, and we're told that it was sufficient for a four-bedroom home, which is what this would be becoming. That well is a deep, you know, a artesian well, drilled well. We have no issues. But there's also water in the street. Should the well have a problem, we could always hook up to the town water if we...
So, there is town water in that area, okay.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions on number four? Number five, unnecessary hardship.
So, unnecessary hardship will be found when the subject property has special conditions or circumstances that distinguish it from other properties in the area, and there's no substantial relationship between the purpose of the ordinance and the specific application of the ordinance as applied to the property, and the proposed use is reasonable. This property has several special conditions that distinguish it from other properties in the area. It's actually one of the few properties, at least in this immediate vicinity, that's not impacted in some way by the South Eagan River or other brook streams and wetlands. This is a contiguous... Contiguously dry property. It has a large dwelling on it, half-constructed in seventeen forty-eight, as I said, and the other half constructed in two thousand and two, consisting of an unfinished space that connected it to an existing barn. And if taken in the totality, other lots in the area just do not share these unique features. Owing to these special conditions, there's no fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the zoning ordinance's restriction on two-family dwellings and fifty-foot front yard setback requirements in the R-one zone. Again, because of the large size of the structure, can support a small second unit of one bedroom and one bathroom. There's a large lot and driveway that can support the addition of one bedroom and one bathroom. Again, not to repeat myself, but I guess I'm going to anyways. The variances would be, if approved, would still not result in the external changes to the property or to the existing structure, so there's no external changes that could affect the neighborhood or the character of the neighborhood. We're not overbuilding the lot. We're not building in setbacks, and again, very similar for all the reasons we've discussed, that this is very similar to an ADU. And the original pla... Like, as I said, the original plan was to go for an ADU. We just found that we didn't meet the square footage requirements due to the existing structure. Again, ADUs are limited to a thousand feet, where the second unit would be about nineteen hundred. So, that is a bit of a hardship to the applicant. We think we've satisfied the hardship standard. We think the proposed use is reasonable, and that this is a good, uniquely situated structure and unit... Proposed units and property for this type of conversion, and granting the variances would enable a reasonable use of the property.
Any questions from the Board? Okay, we're gonna open up the public hearing, so is there anybody that wants to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that wants to speak against this petition? I'm gonna close the public hearing. Any other comments to the Board? From the Board, questions before... Yes, Chuck?
Just a general comment.
Yes.
I'm a bit of a town historian, I guess.
Alright.
And, of course, all of this is very much...
Not a bit of, you are.
These are the kinds of accelerated things that we deal with on a day-to-day basis here in Merrimack, and yet, I think it's of some interest that this particular parcel used to be in the town of Amherst, which was given to the soldiers that fought in King Philip's War. And the captain of the company, who laid out the town, received two lots of land, lots twenty and twenty-one, which is this particular parcel.
Why would it explain the house?
And in our second act of incorporation, here in Merrimack, in seventeen fifty-one, the petitioners complained to the royal governor that what they had been given for the town of Merrimack was mean and ordinary. And so, he gave them a big chunk of Bedford, and he gave them a big chunk of Amherst. And that's how this particular parcel came to be within the bounds of the town of Merrimack.
So, that being said, you can make a motion?
I'd be glad to make a motion, consistent with the wording of the petitioner.
Motion to approve, motion to deny.
Motion to approve.
So, motion to approve the variance. This is just the variance for the conversion, we'll call it, of the house. So, we have a motion made by Chuck, seconded by Lynn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? So, it's five-zero. So then, can I have a motion for the setback? I need a... I need a motion for the setback, because that's the second part of this. So, motion made by Lynn. Do I have a second? A second by Rod. No requirements by town. So, motion for the thirty-feet property line, whereas fifty feet is required. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Five-zero.
Thank you very much.
Passes. Gentlemen?
Thank you. Have a good night.
You do have thirty days in which somebody can come back and appeal.
Correct.
But otherwise, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm surprised. Alright. Moving, moving on, if I may. I'm gonna brutalize the last name, and I apologize. Dick Agnost, petitioner and G T O N H LLC owner, variance under section fifteen point zero-four point C of the zoning ordinance to permit a residential density of four hundred twenty units and a planned unit development, whereas a maximum of four hundred is allowed. Three hundred seventy-eight units currently exist. The parcel is located at Twin Bridge Road in the R-four residential elderly housing aquifer conservation planned residential development overlay and the Town Center overlay districts, tax map five D dash three, lot one fourteen, case number ZBA two thousand and twenty-two dash zero one. Gentlemen, if you could state your names.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Dick Agnost. I'm the owner of the property at five fifteen Daniel Upstah Highway. With me tonight is Jason Lopez, our engineer from Keechen Nordstrom.
Okay.
Without further ado, I'll turn it over to Jason for a brief presentation, if that's alright with you.
Sounds great. Alright. First, I wanna make sure everyone's got a handout. If someone needs a handout, I've got some. Okay? Wasn't sure with the new venue. So, the property we're talking about is the Plaza adjacent to the Plaza with the Tractor Supply. So, right between Twin Bridge Road and the end of that Plaza, there's a independent, separate parcel of land. So, we have our retail space, the restaurant up in the front, Sal's Pizza over here. So, running right down Twin Bridge, there's this open parcel. Back in nineteen eighty, there was actually an approved site plan to extend over the retail space. I believe it was either nineteen or twenty-nine thousand square feet. So, this is a separate parcel now, and that's what we're talking about, so. Yes?
Is that parcel part of the Commons condominium?
Yes. The planned unit development.
Do you own the land?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, as was just stated, this parcel is part of the planned unit development known as the Commons at Merrimack, and the existing project in all, the P U D, has three hundred and seventy-two residential units. Zoning allows up to four hundred units. We are looking to add two buildings, each with twenty-four units, so that's forty-eight additional units, which would then push the total dwelling units within the whole P U D up to four hundred and twenty. So, that exceeds the zoning requirement by twenty units. So, there's the reason we're before you tonight, is to seek a variance to increase the number of units. So, this proposal is unique in that the owner seeks to construct forty-eight units that are all workforce housing. Common practice for workforce housing is usually addressed through community regulations, and you usually get a density bonus. So, you might have a project come forward that has ten to twenty-five percent of the units as workforce housing. This is going to be forty-eight workforce housing units, so this is one hundred percent. So, that does make it quite a unique project. So, RSA six seventy-four defines workforce housing as it relates to this proposal as workforce housing also means rental housing, which is affordable to homeowners, to a household with an income of no more than sixty percent of the median income for a three-person household for the metropolitan area or county which the housing is located, as published annually by HUD. Further, RSA six seventy-four fifty-nine speaks to workforce housing opportunities. It states, "In every municipality that exercises the power to adopt land use ordinance..." It states, "In every municipality that exercises the power to adopt land use ordinance regulations, such ordinance and regulations shall provide reasonable and realistic opportunities for development of workforce housing, including rental multifamily unit housing. In order to provide such opportunities, lot size and overall density requirements for workforce housing shall be reasonable. A municipality that adopts land use ordinance and regulation shall allow workforce housing to be located in a majority, but not necessarily all, of the land area that is zoned to be permitted residential uses within the municipality." Really, what we're trying to do is just to make sure that there is an understanding that there's provisions for the inclusion of workforce housing. So, with that, I can get into, if there's some general questions on the project, I can answer those first, or we can move into the five points.
Yeah, I actually, I have, I'm just, I guess I'm trying to understand. The 372 residential units that you said are already approved.
Yes.
Where are they?
So, the, they're the other side of the plaza.
London Court.
Yes, there's, so, I spent about two, three hours over in the town office going through plans, I mean, so, the original, the original Commons plan between 1979, 1984, the first few sets of plans were, records were not kept very well at that point. But after a while, Robert and I were able to pull through and find a bunch of the following plans. So, Wentworth Place is 40 one-bedroom elderly units. Windsor Terrace is 148 two-bedroom units. Wentworth Place Phase Two is 41 bedroom elderly units, and London Court is 144 two-bedroom apartment units. So, that exercise generated two answers. One answer was, how many units are actually existing in that PUD that we were able to derive the 372?
Right.
The other question we needed to address was, was, did the original parent parcel that made up the whole PUC, was there enough land to handle 400 units? If not, we needed to, the thought was, we would have to ask for a variance for that also. The, the result of that shows that there's an additional 51 units available to be constructed within that original PU, the PUD. So, the 51 can be built some, anywhere within that PUD with site plan approval.
Which includes the Commons, which is where that land is.
Correct, and we're seeking 48. So, the one aspect of the, the approval process that we do not comply with is that zoning limitation of 400 units. So, we're looking to go to the 420 units, so it's that 20 units that we're seeking the variance for.
But you wouldn't need the variance if you were just gonna do the 400 units?
We would not need, we would be before the planning.
So, right now, you could, if, if you didn't try to push for another 20?
Correct.
I'm just saying, if you don't wanna push for another 20?
Yep.
You could be sitting in front of the planning board right now proposing this?
Correct.
To be able to build, and you'd be within zoning?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So, why the 20?
Workforce housing.
I mean, because you, it's just, it's gonna be an extra step for you that, you know, and if it gets turned down, then you're gonna be in a situation where, you know, I'm just curious as to, you know, why, why take the chance?
Well, workforce housing is...
So, that's what the answer is, please, I'm sorry.
Just curious.
We've been doing a lot of things in the state as far as workforce housing, and a lot of times, we've often do these things. I'm sorry. Got it. Workforce housing, we need it in this state, we need it particularly in this area, and this is not for those people. These are people that are in town now, and they need affordable housing, and, and with what's going on with rentals, what's going on with apartments, what's going on with sales, there isn't affordable housing, so we need this. Are you going to be in a position to make these units affordable?
So, I'll answer both questions at the same time, because it's the same answer.
And that's kinda what I was getting at, but, so, thanks, take us there.
So, the secret to affordable housing or workforce housing is density, okay? Where, the way you can control the rent is, the more units you can spread infrastructure and building costs over, the lower the rent you can charge in order to cover the mortgage that's necessary in order to do it. So, we're asking for the additional density to make it workforce. We could go out and construct 28 units pretty much in the next month, just by going to the planning board for site plan approval, but there would have to be market rate. The town of Merrimack has approved almost 1,000 market rate units in the last 24 months, but you know how many workforce housing units they've, they've approved? The Neighborhood Housing Project, that's it. So, the town is in desperate need of this type of housing, we've identified it. It's actually in the perfect location for it, because it's kinda central to Merrimack, it has all of the services around it, food, easy access to the highways, and the people that are in the workforce housing, it's, it's a misnomer to call it affordable housing.
Right.
Because most people think of affordable when they hear the word as low-income housing. It's not low-income housing, the people that live in these units can qualify up to $70,000 in, in income. So, now you're taking into consideration, if you look at the one that we built in Bedford, we have seven schoolteachers, we have five police officers, two firefighters. So, a tendency to have municipal employees relocate there. We also have people that work in the local restaurants and, and other people that are tending the counter at Dunkin' Donuts, and most of them qualify because that's a second job, or, or the wife is working there, whatever the case may be. So, the, to answer your question, I know it was a long-winded answer, I apologize.
No, no, no.
No, that's what I said.
But the answer to your question directly is, in order to make it affordable, we need the density in order to do it.
And that, and that's, and to like, to Lynn's point, is what I was trying, was what I was getting to, Lynn got there a little quick, I think, I did, but, I mean, but yeah, it's, we hear that a lot, you know, affordable housing, and then, you know, you, you look at the apartments that get built, and it's not. So, that's why I was just making that question, in the inquiry into you as far as, you know, what your intention was, but you answered my question, so, thanks.
So, if we approve this, is there a... I don't know what the word is I want. Is this gonna continue to be workforce housing?
Yes, so, the financing...
Or, is there something that prevents you from raising the rental to market rates? Because market rates are...
Yes, our financing is going to require a land use restriction agreement, okay, which restricts the ability to raise the rents beyond what New Hampshire Housing's public, published rents are on an annual basis.
What are you doing for financing?
New Hampshire Housing finances.
Okay, fine, that's good.
Let's get into the criteria.
Okay.
Can I just ask you a question, or? Went, you went kinda quick, if we can go back about 10 minutes on the, the 378 units, is that the current Commons with Wentworth and all those, so that whole plot of Front Street and, that's all the 378?
372.
Yep. Okay.
That's what's been built to date.
Okay, all right, my paperwork says 378, but okay, 372.
And the approval allows 400.
And so, you've got, so these two blue buildings you've got on the screen, that's what you're asking to build?
Correct.
And those are two, two buildings?
Twenty-four units each.
Each, okay. All right, thank you.
So, to, to go to the chair's point, is those would be 14-unit buildings with 14 or 15 hundred dollar a month rents, if they were to be market rate, and because of the additional density that we're asking for, we're able to bring it down to around $1,000 a month.
And that's like one two-bedroom?
Per bed, two-bedroom, correct.
One or twos, yep.
Thank you.
This is good.
Okay, thank you.
Granted the variance.
All right. Number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to public interest because, under the PUD ordinance, there is no restriction to the type of units permitted, like market rate, low-income, workforce housing, elderly, single-family homes, townhomes, or multifamily buildings. This project seeks to develop the subject property with two 24-unit buildings for a total of 48 units. Each unit will be a two-bedroom workforce housing unit. The owner has made the decision to develop all 48 units as workforce housing, not just a portion of the units found in most similar projects. The result of this voluntary decision provides for a benefit to the public interest by helping meet the need for affordable housing and allow for more options for people to work and live in town. Further, the request seeks to exceed the permitted density by 20 units, or 5%. As an example, by right, the owner could construct two buildings, each containing 14, 1,800 square foot, two-bedroom market rate luxury units, or, the proposed option is to construct two buildings, each containing 24, 1,100 square foot, two-bedroom unit, workforce housing units. Therefore, these two options would both construct two buildings with similar massing, exterior appearance, so it could be suggested that the workforce housing option provides a greater benefit and is not contrary to the public interest.
Any questions? Number two?
Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because, the spirit of the ordinance states to promote the health, safety, convenience, and general welfare of the town of Merrimack, and to make it attractive place which to live. The request to exceed the 400-unit density threshold by 20 units is in alignment with the spirit of the ordinance by providing quality, affordable housing to local, the local workforce, like teachers, police, and fire staff, young professionals, restaurant and retail staff. The convenience to work and live in the same community and having affordable housing, both help provide for the ability to have a better work-life balance. It also allow residents to have a greater community involvement that can benefit the general welfare of the town.
Any questions? Okay. Number three?
Granting the variance would do substantial justice because the subject property and all the abutting properties located, are located in the residential district. The properties directly abutting to the west-north-east are commercial uses consisting of restaurants, retail, service businesses, and office space. The properties directly abut to the south are single-family homes. The proposed use of multifamily residential could be considered a transitional use between the commercial and single-family homes. There are other existing multifamily unit buildings within the same PUD. Therefore, the proposed use is consistent with the area, areas' present uses and provides for affordable housing in the area. So, granting the variance would do substantial justice.
Number four?
Granting the variance would not diminish the value of surrounding properties because, as I mentioned in, above, in item one, the ability to construct two buildings containing 14 units versus two buildings with 24 units, both those buildings would have similar massing size in exterior appearance, so granting the variance for an additional 20 units would not create a discernible difference. Further, similar existing multifamily buildings exist in the area. For these reasons, we suggest that granting the variance will not diminish values of surrounding properties.
And on hardship?
And on the hardship, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, explain how no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property. So, the provision of the zoning ordinance permits the approval of additional residential units within the Commons at Merrimack PUD by right. The subject property is within the PUD and is vacant and available for additional development. This makes the subject lot unique in comparison to abutting properties and prime for the development of the proposed use.
And then B.
And B, the proposed use is reasonable, one, because the proposed use will add 48 workforce housing units to an underserved sector of the housing market.
So, you said this is all part of the Commons, which is the London Court and all of those places?
Yep.
The shopping area, so, this was earmarked to be built, but they just never built it, or?
Yeah, it, it was originally, back in 1980, it was planned to...
Do you wanna put that up on the board, so we can see if they agree?
Yeah.
So, back, yeah, 1980, so, is the restaurant out in the front?
Yep.
And the end unit, I think that the health, fitness area is about right here, so, extending over, satellite stores is what was proposed, 29,000 square feet, so, that, that area, you know, is Twin Bridge Road now, so, right out tight, close, they were looking to expand that over.
And they just never did.
They just never did. They ended up in the later, I saw later plans, where they actually subdivided this off as a separate lot. At one point, it was, it was part of the original parcel, so...
All right. Questions from the board?
Not yet.
Not yet? Anybody else? All right. Gentlemen, we're gonna open up the public hearing. Is there anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anybody that'd like to speak against this petition?
Yeah.
Well, if you guys could just, I'll swear a minute as they come in. If you guys could just grab a seat over there, and first person can come on up? Chuck, you're supposed to silence those phones. Click the side button.
That's part of the board's discussion initially.
State your name and address.
Hi, I'm Melissa Blasick, I live at nine Twin Bridge Road.
And what could we do for that?
Um, well, I'm here to object to this proposal. I think we all kind of agree if this was the 1980 plan, where it was a commercial space that we wouldn't have so much of an objection that we have over multi-unit housing. The street is quite narrow and small as it is, we have the quarry at the end of the street, we have a lot of trucks that are going back and forth. If you're adding that amount of units on that road, I'm a little unclear about where all those cars are supposed to go. As it is, you've got the dance school and the karate school at the front building here, that overflow parking is almost always on our street for most of the day anyway, and now we're going to add 48 units, if I'm understanding correctly, and all of those cars. I, I literally can't imagine, I have a three-year-old on that street, right across the street, the amount of traffic will be unbelievable, and again, as it is, we usually can't get out on DW highway very easily, especially at rush hour, and now we're going to add even more cars. It honestly sounds like a traffic hazard.
I would agree with you, that, you know, there's definitely gonna be influx of cars in that area.
Mm-hmm, and if we, again, if this was a commercial space, they'd be parked, first of all, it'd only be, you know, business hours, right? It wouldn't be all day long. They already have all, that whole parking lot for those cars, for that complex. I, I can't even fathom 48 units plus a parking lot in those parcels, I, I, I literally can't.
No, I mean, I know, you bring up a whole point, I mean, obviously, you could come in down the road, or you could come in through the plaza, but, you know, I, I get what you're you could come in down the road, or you could come in through the plaza, but, you know, I get what you're saying.
Right. So, yeah, more of the cars and the traffic would be a real serious issue for us on that street. That's a lot of people.
Right. So just, so just, you know, so the reason, and I want to, and this is one of the reasons why I had them clarified as well, is they came to us because they're looking for the extra twenty so they could do the affordable housing. If, for some reason, the petition, or if the petition doesn't pass this evening, just so you know, and, and, because I want you to be aware, they could still, they could still go forward and put in those, they could now, they could then go to planning and just put in the normal apartments, so.
I understand. It's less people, at least.
It's true.
And, you know, we could still go to the planning board on that.
No, I'm just, I'm making, I'm making it aware.
I know, I understand.
Yeah, but no, I, I understand what you're saying. No, and you bring up, you bring up a valid point regarding the traffic. And so, now, do you live like right across the street from there?
Yes, that's my house.
Oh, right down there? Okay.
Yep.
All right, yeah. You're right, that road is, that road is narrow.
It is a very narrow road, and it already has a lot of traffic because of the quarry. And then all of this business here, all of their cars that really don't fit in their parking lots. They're always out on the street.
I've seen them out there, yeah.
Yeah. So, um... Yeah, I was a little shocked when I got the letter. I'm thinking, wow, that's a lot of people.
All right.
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to speak against this petition? Actually, if you haven't sworn in, you raise your right hand. Sorry to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth? Everybody who's going to testify, anyone who's going to talk tonight. Raise your right hand. Sorry to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right. Sorry about that. Yeah, just say your name and, and address.
Chuck McNulty, six Twin Bridge Road.
Where, can, are you further down on that map there, or?
I'm at eleven. No, no, I'm like thinking about six right here. This is six. Eleven twin.
I'm right after Melissa's house.
A little bit further down?
Yeah, I'm just, just off the side.
Okay.
Again, the traffic and the concerns would be with the entrance to that road. I know they stated that London Court is another part of this project, but that infrastructure was built to accommodate that. The road's double-wide, they have a light, there's an island. The water flow seems to go well. Steve's yard gets flooded, as it is. You know, we're going to bring more cars, more... I think the road wasn't designed to, to do this. You know, the entranceway to the road is very narrow, and as Melissa stated, there's cars here every day, you know? And now you're coming out, this is a turn, so it's a hazard to begin with, as the cars are on, what is it, DW? You know, they're all doing relatively forty, forty-five miles an hour. And right now, especially with the snow, we're pushed down even more, you know? So it's, it's a pretty big concern. You know, I don't know, was there a green space plan with that original unit? I mean, I don't know if they have that back then.
I, yeah, that would be...
They probably didn't. They weren't thinking about that.
If they would have, I don't, yeah, I don't, you mean a green space, meaning that just being left open is a...
Yeah, just left open. I didn't know if that commons originally had something like that for the green space, or where their snow's supposed to go for the commons, and where the drain runoff's supposed to go? Because there's a field there, it's kind of low.
Yeah.
On this side. So I didn't know if that's where their water actually collects and, and heads to.
So the, the, based on the diagram he put up, the, there was that green space down towards the bottom there?
This side.
Yeah, that's all supposed to be a shopping center. They were supposed to expand that out.
Not the whole thing, it's supposed to come out.
Yeah, come out, yeah, a little bit more, yeah.
And a little bit to the L, so it would still be a way.
But I see what you're, and, no, and I don't know what, the other thing is that, you know, this gets into the planning board, and I can't, I can't speak that, yeah, but they, they would, they, if, if it's approved, or if they move forward, they have to go for site plan approval, so.
Sure.
Whatever that looks like as far as green spacing and all of that that they have around the buildings, but I understand what you're saying, yeah.
I guess my biggest concern is the safety of my neighbors.
Yeah.
And our road, we're already congested to begin with, and to tighten it up by, you know, say that with the extra twenty units, you're talking at least twenty cars, day and night, seven days a week, where that's not really happening now on our street.
Right.
So I guess, um, safety's a big one. Infrastructure for my road, which I guess the planning board would have to take up.
Yeah, that'd definitely be more planning. Okay.
So, yeah, I'm definitely opposed. All right?
All right, thank you very much. So anybody else that would like to speak against this petition? Come on down.
Stephen Cook, seven Twin Bridge Road. The one...
Welcome, Stephen.
Right across from the one that will be built right there.
Okay.
My concern is the same as everybody else, the traffic, all the, and parking. Because like Chuck said, when, at the end of the road, where you got the bridge and everything, the sightseeing and all that, the cars coming towards, from, going north, there's going to be an accident there, safety issues. Because the time you start to go, the cars are going fast, and you go and see them, and they hit you.
You're saying pulling out on Daniel Webster?
Huh?
You're saying pulling out on Daniel Webster, or?
Right at the end of the road.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, to Daniel Webster, okay, yeah.
The bridge is over here.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's like a, comes around the corner, like, so if you're at the end of the road, and you're looking this way, but you look this way, if you're going to go left, by the time you go, the cars are already there, because they're flying. And like Melissa said, the cars, where they're packing for the dance studio and everything, they're always packed on the side of the road and all that. And if these get approved, with the snow removals, if you go down center in front, all the cars are parked on the side of the road so they can plow the parking lots and stuff.
Where's this?
You know, Front Street, you can't see it, but...
Yeah.
As a town worker, plowing the roads, the ones, the contractors that plow these parking lots and stuff, all the cars are parked out in the, on, on the road. So we can't plow the roads.
Where are you talking about cars parking on the roads?
Right across from here.
Are you talking on Twin Bridge?
Yes.
And cars parking from the, the cells and the dance sto... They're parking on Twin Bridge Road?
Yeah. On the weekends.
That can be dealt with. And it should be dealt with.
Yeah. And that, like I'm saying, they get approved when they do the snow removal, where are they going to pack their cars when they're plowing the parking lots and stuff?
That's a, that's a planning board issue, and that would have to be dealt with, and yes, I agree. You need to, you need to make clear for that.
Because I see that on Center Street, Front Street.
Shouldn't be.
Frank, Frankonia.
Yep.
They're always parked in the road, and you can't plow them. That's an issue.
I could suggest what you could do.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're planning, you know.
No, but I agree with you. They shouldn't be on the road.
Right.
But we should be dealing with that separately.
Mm-hmm. But you said three hundred and seventy-two, my, the paper says, there's three hundred and seventy-eight. So it should be twenty-one units each.
Well, what we're talking about tonight is, and this is the zoning board versus the planning board.
Yeah, I know.
The planning board has something else.
But he...
What we're talking about tonight is, are we going to allow this many units? Or they want twenty more units versus what they're already allowed to use?
Yeah, but, but, where he said it, there was three hundred and seventy-two units already existing. On the paper I got for this meeting, it says three hundred and seventy-eight.
Casey, is this a mistype at three seventy-eight?
I'm actually not sure.
Okay, okay.
I'll have to follow up with that tomorrow.
We'll kind of get into three seventy-eight, three seventy-two.
Either way, the variance request is the same, though.
Three hundred and seventy-eight units currently exist.
But the point is, is we're...
I know.
We're talking about allowing them to do what they can do now.
I know.
And allowing them to do an additional twenty units to, in order us to get some workforce housing, which if you go out to Gilbert Crossing, or you go to some of these other units that have been approved legitimately, that are not workforce housing, that are not affordable. And he's saying, if you give me twenty more units,
Yeah.
I'll do workforce housing. Whereas if you don't give us the twenty units, then we're just going to do marketplace. And we're, we're still going to have some of the same issues that you have, and we'll deal with that, those issues at the planning board level. You've got some legitimate concerns, there's no question.
All right.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak against this petition?
Tina Wilson, I live at thirteen Twin Bridge Road.
Okay.
I guess I'm just going to address the whole parking issue again. My son's bus stop, this is number one, actually, for me. They can't come down the road because we're at a dead end. So they can't turn around or anything, so they stop right where this is, the intersection right here. The bus stop pulls up right here. So if we have apartments in here with another however many units, that's going to be a nightmare for me.
Tina, does that, does that road go into the commons plaza?
This road does, yes.
Okay.
And, um... Oh, I see the spaces are marked out, and all the mass where they're all going to park at.
Well, they've got to have sufficient parking. Planning board would deal with that.
And also, I want to hit on what Chuckie said about the snow. It all comes down to me. I'm the last one on the road, I'm the, I'm the one that gets it all. It's a skating rink in my yard all the time.
Where are you?
Down, down here.
Okay.
Last house, it's all hill, it's all coming down to me, I'm getting it all, so. If they don't do a great job with that, then I'll be dealing with it. So the snow issue and the, and the traffic, I, we're going to need a light at the end of the road at, at the minimum, I would think.
When you say this...
The stop sign is not going to be sufficient anymore after this.
When you say the snow issue, are you talking about the town plowing the snow down to you?
No, I'm just saying, actually, more of the runoff, the, the melting, when this, when their mounds of snow melts from plowing their spots, and when it starts to melt, that's coming to me.
Yeah, I don't know if building the apartments are really going to make a difference on that. I guess, I can't comment on that.
Well, they, nobody plows this right now. It's, it's ice rink out here, because the, it's, the land is low. So it accumulates in there, and no, we don't, nobody has to deal with it. But if they start, if they start, you know, plowing it up into big mounds, because they're going to need to have to, they put that in there. And what else are they going to do? Oh, and not to mention, I'm sure that everybody's going to want to pull out of their spots when it snows to, so they can have their spots plowed. And they're going to end up on the street, and then he won't be able to plow anymore.
Or they'll end up in the parking lot next to the G-Dragon, but no, I understand what you're saying.
That's all it is. It's just, it's very congested area, as it is. So that's our most biggest concerns.
All right, thank you. If you'd like to come back up and address the concerns? Unless there's anyone else that wants to speak against? Oh, one more? Oh, okay.
He's with me.
Okay.
Wait, I'll take the first round.
Okay.
I'll adjust them first, and then
Sure.
my color coordinator over here can add additional commentary. First, we hear everybody's concerns. We have a reputation of working with our neighbors. Most neighbors that create an objection when we build out the project, those objections clearly go away, but that's for the planning board. The planning board, at the planning board, we will address the traffic and the, and the drainage issues, as we have to under the ordinance to begin with. But just for, for the board's edification, the luxury that this project has is that we are going to be proposing to the planning board to allow easements over the shopping mall for the apartment projects, understanding that there's parking, or parking issue that's created by our butter, first of all, and not us. And we don't want to further exacerbate that issue. When the snow is going to be removed from the apartments, they will park in the shopping mall. We have five hundred and eighteen parking spaces and only eighty thousand square feet. When we direct them to exit, we are going to encourage them to exit through the shopping center because of the lighted intersection that we have access to, which is much easier to get onto DW than going up Twin Bridge. So we've already considered that, and those easements will be allowed for access and parking for the apartment units during snow removal and overflow parking. I mean, one of the largest detriments to most apartment projects is they're underparked, because the ordinance is a one and a half to two spaces. If you have two cars, you're taking up both spaces. Where does your, your visitor park? So we have the luxury of space, and we have the luxury of additional significant amount of available parking doors. I know that my esteemed colleague pointed out that there was a twenty-nine thousand square foot addition that was approved in nineteen eighty. Well, when we calculate this out and actually look at what we could put there, it would be over forty thousand square feet. The forty-eight apartment units is really a benign use on a parking or traffic count based on what we can actually build there. So if we were to build out forty thousand additional square feet, the traffic would be twice what the apartments will generate, and maybe over twice, right?
It's going to be more than twice, yeah.
So, I know that I won't speak for staff, but that is a typo. When the calculations were done, it's three seventy-two, so twenty-eight are. And that was verified to me in a memo from the town planner, so I think that the eight was a typo in the notice.
Yeah, just to back that up, the, the original, when we were originally working with Robert Price on that, the email came through, three hundred and seventy-eight. And after we double-checked the math there, we realized it's three seventy-two.
Okay.
So just as, I'll, I have a copy of that email that went, I'll give it to Casey just for the, the record, and then checking.
Do you have anything else to add to that?
No, just the planning board process. We're going to be required to engage a traffic consultant to help with traffic, the roadway, any improvements that may, may not be needed. So that, that's just part of the planning process, and, you know, we'll, we'll deal with that at, at that time.
Right?
Quick question that one of the abutters had was a green space. I see your blue buildings. I'm wondering how mu, how much of the trees between your building and Twin Bridge, will there still be trees? And, and...
Down in here?
Yes, between, between your buildings and Twin Bridge.
I can't speak to that in, in any, I, I don't know yet. We need to do topography of the site and determine what the grades are. We need to set the elevation of the building, and the parking, and our side slopes. If our sides, side slopes come down and, in, in cause of the need for removal of trees, we may lose some or all of it. But the planning board requirements, you know, will push us into looking at a landscape plan. So if we end up removing trees, we're going to end up planting trees through the landscape design process.
And then, follow-up if I could, is the two buildings there, where would the parking be for those two buildings?
So on the concept, I am not sure if that's attached to your handout or not.
No.
I, I have some copies here if you'd like that.
We can't accept them, but if you can explain it, I agree.
Twelve, twelve spaces along the front here, I have nine here, nineteen coming across the back, five over here, seventeen, five, thirteen. That meets the requirement based on the planning board number of spaces per unit. But then, what we're, as Dick had mentioned, we're going to be, you know, having that easement over this for additional overflow into this as needed. So we'll meet the planning board's requirement, and then some. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Any comments from the public? Anybody else want to speak? Okay. No, 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 Kelly, come right back up.
Need too much.
Yeah, right.
Do you mind if I just stay here?
Uh, yeah, you can stay there. If you want to speak right there, you can speak right there, yeah.
Do I say who I am?
No, no, we already know who you are.
All right. I just wanted to ask, you're, you were saying that this has already been, not the twenty existing, but the other ones already been approved.
Yes, the, so the other ones have been approved, what they're looking for is in, they're looking for an extra twenty, and the extra twenty-
Yeah.
-will allow to make it the workforce housing, which will be more-
I understand.
-affordable from that perspective.
So when did that, the original ones be, get approved? Because I don't remember ever getting a letter in that. In the eighties. Wow, okay.
If you were there in the eighties, then that's when you would have gotten it.
Thanks, thanks. That's all I need.
Yep. Any other questions? Any other comments? Okay. Yep, 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 come on up.
Speaking to Mike. Yeah, just a quick one.
Actually, you want to direct it to us, not, not to-
Oh, on the road, the access road where the condos are going to be coming out, all the-
With the apartments, yeah.
The driveways are.
Yeah.
They could, couldn't they just make that one way in, no traffic out? So that way, the cars would be going-
The Planning Board to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, the Planning Board would be able to do that.
That'd be the easiest way from keeping the traffic off the road exiting. They'd have to go up to the light and, you know, leave.
Sure, yeah, no.
That's a Planning Board issue, and yes, they could.
Yeah. Yeah. That's just a suggestion.
Yeah.
Because originally, when that mall was built, that was, there was a sign there, there was a sign there, one way.
Yeah.
There were, people weren't supposed to exit.
Locked down.
No one listened. So they took it down.
It's, yeah.
Want to back up?
Yeah, because that was supposed to be one way, but that's all I got.
Thank you. Anybody else?
So I think, in reference to that, should they be approved tonight, then you would be welcome to come back to the Planning Board when they go in front of the Planning Board and express these same concerns and see if the Planning Board can then work with you.
Any other comments, questions? Daisy? No, nothing, okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. The Board, any deliberations, questions? I have personally a couple of things that kind of stick out for me. I mean, I like the fact that it's, it's, it's affordable housing, or workforce housing. I like that and I, because I do think that Merrimack, and I'd rather see that than more apartments that are going to be fifteen hundred dollars and people can't afford to live in them. But, spirit of the ordinance doesn't really sit very well with me, but, or diminish proper values. Those two areas kind of don't sit with me very well. That's just my thought on that. I don't know, anybody else has any thought, concerns? Chuck, go ahead.
Do we know what the anticipated impact on the school district would be?
Oh, I, with that many apartments, not much, would be minimal. I, I'm assuming, I mean-
What is minimal?
When we look at-
That's a more of a-
The number of students we have at Gilbert Crossing, which is, I think they're talking about seven to nine students in that whole complex in the elementary schools. A couple of years ago, when they did the impact on condos, it was point six students per unit in condos. It's, it's nowhere near what it is in single-family housing.
I think we had some recent testimony relative to another application for, there is, there is a specific formula that's used in the state for-
I'm, I'm sure there is, I, I don't know what, if you're looking for me what that formula is, I don't know what it is.
Well, actually, I'm looking, I'm looking to the applicant to provide that information. They've said that there is-
That's a Planning Board issue.
Well, no, because it specifically states that granting the variance would do substantial justice. Granting the variance would not diminish the value of surrounding properties. It, it, it comes into play in virtually everything that they are wanting to ask us to give them. After all, they're not asking us to grant them something. They're asking the zoning board to give them density so that their proposal can work. I'm somewhat uncomfortable with that.
I, I see your point, right, Chuck?
I'm just going by what has happened with the, and we've had some significant housing increase in density in the town as far as apartments are concerned, and what we have seen in Merrimack, not statewide, but in Merrimack, the number of students in these apartments has been minimal. What we're seeing is young professionals. Now granted, young professionals could have kids in the future, but what we're seeing is it's not significant increases in students in these new apartments that have been approved.
Well, perhaps community development can illuminate this issue for us because the Superintendent of Schools in his most recent proposal to the Budget Committee indicated that we would have an additional forty-one students next year as a result of increased interest in the town of Merrimack.
Is that based on condo development or just single families?
I, I believe that's based on everything that, that's been recent, so, and there's been a lot of construction in Merrimack.
And, and thusly, students add up quickly, and there are formulas by which people can calculate and make their case to the minimal impact, but I haven't seen any evidence to support that. I know previous applicants have, so I'm, I'm not comfortable that the evidence is clear that there won't be a diminution of our interests here in Merrimack as a result of giving them density. Again, I'm somewhat uncomfortable with that. Granting someone a variance is one thing. Negotiating for density to make somebody else's project work is something I'm uncomfortable with.
The Board can ask for additional information and have a continuance to the next meeting as long as that additional information is directly related to the, the density question here.
I don't think the schooling is really necessarily density-related. And I understand where you're coming from, Chuck, but you're talking about forty-eight units. You're also talking about forty-one student, new students across three schools, three elementary schools. My, my kids went through the school system and the, the school, the classes weren't not over, there weren't like, you know, fifty kids in one class or forty kids in one class.
Well, again, that's anecdotal. I mean, we do actually have budgetary figures for what each and every student costs at each and every location. And that is a cost to the town of Merrimack, and we must be cognizant of those expenditures that we will have to undertake when someone offers us something else.
So we're talking about twenty units. Because right now, they can do X number of units without our approval because they've, they've got it already. And what we're, they're asking us to do is to say, in exchange for allowing them to do an additional twenty units, they will make those units workforce housing, which nobody else that has done any of these developments lately in town have done. They've all just said, we want to do these units and we want to have this, and, and they haven't addressed the schools, they haven't done any of this.
Even under the proposed legislation that, that governs workforce housing, there is a percentage that's allowable in a project, and there must be a reason for, for that percentage. The fact that somebody simply now wants to go and build an, an entire project out of workforce housing may in fact not be consistent with the legislation that allows workforce housing to begin with. We, we don't, we don't know what the unintended consequences would be of putting in additional density, additional workforce housing, and, and not understanding what the ramifications are of that.
I understand what you're saying, we have to look at the here and the now. We can't make hypotheticals about what can or cannot happen, or what will or will not happen.
Well, that's true, but I've asked for evidence to support their, their, their somewhat arbitrary assertion.
I, I don't think that, that, I don't think that's, I, I wouldn't see that relevant as to making a decision on this, based upon whether or not, how many students that may or may not live there, or may, how many students may or may not move into what is about forty-eight units.
Twenty additional.
Twenty additional.
Well, there will, there will be an impact, and right now, we-
There could be an impact. It's not, there could be-
No, there, there will be an impact. There definitely will be an impact. We, we know that. How big is the impact? As I said, there, there are formulas that will tell us how big that impact will be.
Chuck, Chuck, again, you're talking twenty units, okay? It's twenty units, two-bedroom apartments. If, best, twenty kids, yes. Could it be twenty kids? Sure, it could be twenty kids. Could it be one? Could it be two? Could it be three? Again, we're doing the hypothetical and that's not, we really got to look at the here and the now, and what we got to, we got to make a decision based upon what's in front of us, not what could be in front of us.
Well, what's in front of us is a request for us to give a developer density so that he can make a project work and provide something that we all might think is, is beneficial to the community. The, the rest of the community doesn't actually get to make a decision about density, nor, nor do I think that we should be making a decision about density. We should be making a decision based upon the five criteria, and I'm uncomfortable that they have, they have met that.
So which, which criteria are you uncomfortable with? Because if you're going to make a motion to deny, you need to, you need to cite the reasoning why, so you would need to cite specifically under which criteria that you would be making a motion to deny.
Well, that, that presumes that I, I would, I would not simply vote to not approve.
Okay.
Which I'm more than happy to do.
If you're going to make a motion to deny-
I'm, I am not going to make a motion to deny, but I, I, I am uncomfortable making a vote to approve.
Okay. So noted. Any other comments from the Board?
Yeah, I, I think like you, Patrick, I'm, personally, I'm frustrated with all the, the buildings that are going up in Merrimack. With that said, we're getting twenty-eight units regardless. Those twenty-eight units could cost, I forget what the number was in front of me, that eighteen hundred a month to fifteen hundred a month versus the additional twenty, which could bring it down to a reasonable rent for many people. And I see so often on the Facebook forums, Merrimack, and the two or three different Merrimack forums, people looking for affordable housing and people always saying, new ones that are built, yeah, but they're twenty-two hundred a month for a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom. So my frustration with all of them being built is in part that they're out of reach cost-wise for many families.
Or young professionals or individuals-
Yeah.
-who are in Merrimack. I agree.
Right. So, I mean, I'm leaning towards the approval of this simply not because I want more buildings, more apartments, but I really like the idea that we're going to get twenty-eight units, like it or not. The additional twenty, I think, I like the idea that it will bring it down in cost to make it affordable to many people and bring it into the, you know, again, the affordable realm.
Ben?
Yeah, I, I sort of agree with Rod. When you look at Merrimack, we have too much high-priced rental in town, and we don't have enough to service the young population, single individuals that are just starting out to work their way up the ladder in lower-paying jobs. And I think that the, when you look at the twenty-eight versus four, of expensive apartments, you know, you look at the apartments in town now, and most of the two-bedrooms start at eighteen hundred, and they go upwards of twenty-five, twenty-seven hundred.
Yep.
That's not affordable. And to, to be able to bring forty-eight units of workforce housing into the town, I think, is a big thing. And it's something that very, very few developers, other than that one project that Neighbors did down by the interchange-
Mm-hmm.
-but no one's doing it. And I'm behind this concept of providing workforce housing, and I'm not worried about our schools getting overloaded because the families are smaller today. Birth rates are, you know, at the lowest they've been in twenty years, thirty years. So, and, and if this, if the school needs more space, that's their, their responsibility to figure it out. But I don't think this is going to swamp the town and drive our taxes through the roof. I'm not afraid of that. The other issues that have come up, you know, today, and I understand the people that have spoken against it, you know, as you said, those are more Planning Board issues, not, not a zoning board issue. And so that can be dealt with accordingly.
Lynn?
Thanks, Ben.
I'm pleased to see a developer come in here and say, I'm not in it for the money, so to speak. I'm in it to provide for the community, to provide for what the community needs. This workforce housing, this is an issue statewide in every town, trying to provide affordable housing for people to stay in the town, and I'm, I'm pleased that we finally have a developer that's willing to come in and say, I'm willing to do this, but in order to make it work, I need a little higher density. It's in an appropriate place. I think the Planning Board can deal with the, the traffic issues, can deal with the parking issues. That's what we have them for. But we're here as a zoning issue to deal with, does this make sense for the town? And I'm thrilled to have somebody come in and say, I'm going to provide some workforce housing. We need it in the state. We need to do more of this.
All right. You want to make a motion?
I will so move.
Turn your mic on.
I will so move that we approve the variance under section fifteen point oh two, I'm sorry, oh, four point C of the zoning ordinance to permit a residential destiny, density of four hundred and twenty units in a planned unit development- density of 420 units in a planned unit development, whereas a maximum of 400 is allowed. 378 units currently exist. The parcel is located at 6 Twin Bridge Road in the R4 residential. Elderly housing, aquifer conservation, planning residential development overlay, there's a few of them there, I guess. And the town center overlay districts. Tax map 5D hyphen 3, lot 114, KZBA 2022 hyphen 41.
I'd like to, before I ask for a second, I'd like to make, just, just to make it official on this, that it's not 378 units that currently exist, it's 372 units that currently exist.
I will state that in my motion.
So just so we have the correct number out there, because there seemed to be some confusion on that.
I'll second it.
There's also, you also have stuff from the board. Petitioner Charlotte Tina Seifler for approval from the planning board.
Subject to staff memo.
Subject to staff memo, thank you. And so we have a motion by Lynn. We have a second by Rod. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 4-1. Gentlemen?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
And I hope you listen to what we've been talking about tonight, so when you come to planning board, you'll be prepared.
Questions are going to be
Because I'm on planning board.
We're even prepared for the school issue. Sir, if I may, if you go on the Hampshire Housing website, you'll see that it's between 0.21 and 0.28 children per unit within a project of workforce housing, that's 100% workforce housing. So in the 20 units, you're looking at about four kids. I didn't, I'm sorry, we closed the whole hearing, so I didn't know I was allowed to speak.
They don't understand the difference between planning and zoning.
All right, so
I move we approve the minutes as distributed.
Okay, so that would be the approval of the minutes for December 29, 2029. We have a motion to approve by Lynn. Did you watch the video?
I did.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chuck. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So the minutes are approved. Anything else that needs to be discussed by planning?
Nope, I have nothing for you guys.
All right. Thank you, have a good evening. Any other, okay, if there's nothing else?
Would we adjourn? Can we adjourn?
I'll second it.
Motion to adjourn by Rod, seconded by Lynn, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Daisy, you want to adjourn?
Have a great evening.